Welcome to the November 12, 2024 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Crable, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be in your presence again, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. We ask wisdom that we may do our job well this evening, and we ask heart that we may understand the needs of our community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Culler.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington, Mr. Brady, Mr. Murray, Mr. Pajali, Mr. Coons, Mr. Crable, Ms. Vargo.
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Vargo?
So moved to second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, Ms. Vargo is excused. Commissioners, do you have before the minutes of our meeting of October the 28th? What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadd.
I move that we accept the minutes of the October 28 meeting as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, those minutes are approved. Tonight, we have a presentation regarding our new strategic plan that will be delivered by one of our consultants, Alex Pestic. Alex, please come to the podium and share with us what we've got.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be back. I apologize, Shelley, my partner in this fell ill this morning, so sorry you get to deal with me this evening. Commissioner President Brady asked me to cut this to about 90 minutes. I'll go page by page. Actually, I'm going to move pretty quickly as an update. As you recall, we were in front of this board in September. What we said is that we would be back with a draft of the strategic plan, and I'm really excited to share kind of how we listened, how we learned, how we took a lot of the feedback and input that we got, and really came up with a concise strategic plan for the city of Sandusky. You'll notice that the subtitle of the document is "Continue the Momentum and Build Stability." We heard that in many ways, shapes and forms throughout this process, and I do believe that the document charts a course for that. So before I jump into it, I want to kind of remind everybody kind of four main tenets of this work and the charge that you gave to Shelley and I. One is that this is an internal document for the city of Sandusky, really understanding internal processes and how the administration and the Legislative Board, the City Commission, can work together and how decisions are made. This document is a guide. It is not a playbook. It doesn't tell you everything to do. There's still going to be many, many nuanced discussions that are going to be part of every decision that the city makes. That's not atypical. That's just how good governance works, and so I don't want to, as detailed as some of this strategic plan goes into, I don't want to put out any sort of thought or feeling that this replaces the dialogue that must occur in order to make good decisions together. The other thing that rang loud and clear through this process, and I think is you'll see it throughout this document, is that location matters in Sandusky. I'm going to dig into that a little bit as we move through, and you'll see community voice that we collected through the community survey and working with city commissioners as you represent your constituency. That is also present throughout the document. So without that, I'm going to go through very quickly with this. If there's anything that comes up, please, please let me know. Feel free to interrupt, and we can have a dialogue, or questions at the end. The document really is summed up through the executive summary. Kind of the main points that I would make with this is that we really highlighted the process. We introduced the language that we pulled from or learned from the community survey, and like I said, the conversations, working with commissioners and city staff and administration. There is a narrative in the city of Sandusky that it's downtown versus the neighborhoods, and we have to embrace that, and we have to recognize that. We think that there's an amazing opportunity through the work that the city does and continues to do. I understand that the city commissioner gave a presentation a few meetings ago that showed all of the mapping of where the initiatives are happening citywide and shared that with us, and really saw the dots across the entire city. We think that there's an opportunity to change the narrative from versus to and, so it's downtown and the neighborhoods, and it's really a singular Sandusky. That is summed up in that executive summary, and that language is consistent throughout the entire document. The other thing, these plans have a shelf life. This is really intended to guide some of the decisions and how the decisions are made for the next five years. The world changes very quickly, and so in five years, I would imagine that some of the core concepts of this can carry through, but there's time to revisit and have conversations. So I offer that to say that this document is a moment in time. It captures this process. We're hopeful that it can continue to add value, but there is a reason, there is an opportunity to revisit it in five years, which is a way to say it doesn't have to be perfect. There's opportunity for updates, and there's nuance, like I said, with the conversations. We outlined the process for just kind of a reminder. It was about eight months long, kind of start to finish. Part of our work was going out to the community through the community survey. You can see kind of the word cloud. I won't go through all of it, but most of the comments that we got back and kind of the identification for the city of Sandusky is the Sanduskyans are very proud of where they live, and they're proud of the city and some of the decisions and movement that it is going. You'll notice when I get to the community comments, we pulled some quotes that we feel shows a very balanced approach to what we heard. Some of the comments are critical, and some of them are also very supportive, and that's really important to understand, that there is an ongoing kind of dialogue that needs to happen with the community. Our timeline, we're really towards the end here, like I said, in month eight. We're not asking for formal adoption tonight. It really is an update from where we were in September, and I believe that there's going to be a formal, there's an ask for formal adoption in a future meeting of the City Commission. I mentioned the community survey. There's some key kind of facts and trends and patterns that we pulled out. I'll go to the big one. The big question is, where does the city prioritize investments? You can see the graph on the left. Most folks identified central, which we believe is kind of interpreting downtown. And then when asked the follow-up question of where should the city prioritize investments, it's really distributed across the entire city. So knowing that there's data that's part of this work and part of how the city is tracking the initiatives, I think that there's a communications opportunity here. I believe that City Manager Orzek, I said, presented that out earlier to show kind of that that is happening across the city, but continue to understand and recognize that that's part of the narrative and communications within the city. We've looked at previous city plans. I won't go through all of it. There's a lot of really great ideas. There's a lot of things that can be tapped into. This is not to say stop planning. It's to say, hey, you've got really good things. Don't let them sit on the shelf, because there was a lot of community conversation that led to those things, and it would be a disservice to the folks that participated in that, almost 3,000, to not go back and kind of cross-reference and check those things. I mentioned the quotes. I mentioned the community survey. Throughout the document, you'll see kind of anywhere there's a word bubble or a word cloud, that is a direct quote taken from the community survey. We thought it was really important to show community voice and how it influenced some of the goals and recommendations that came out of this planning process. Working with the City Commission, as you guys remember, we established six categories, really focus areas, neighborhoods, housing, waterfront, economic development, municipal services, and arts and culture. These are ways to organize the work and organize the goals and eventual initiatives in the way that the city can work together to make those decisions. I won't go through all of them, but this is generally how the report and how this plan is organized. So as you can see, kind of top left, housing is the category that we're working on here. There's two goals associated with that. So for instance, goal number one is increase of the diversity of housing options across the city, and then there's a series of sample initiatives that the city could consider moving forward in order to achieve that goal. The second goal under housing is maintain quality of existing housing stock, and again, similar example initiatives of what the city might be able to consider. These came from conversations. This is cross-referencing programs and other opportunities that the city already has. Here, we kind of leaned into the city manager's report, understanding that specific to housing, there's been several programs generated in order to support and achieve these goals, resulting in over 1,200 projects and about $3.5 million invested. So I think that that's really key, to recognize that this is a strategic plan for the city moving forward, recognizing that there are really good things that the city is currently doing, and let's continue those initiatives. Neighborhoods, the two goals that are associated with that, you guys can spend time with this. I can always go back. I don't want to read it to you. Waterfront, economic development, really the key of economic development is supporting existing businesses within the city of Sandusky while attracting new investment opportunities, thinking regionally when it makes sense. Municipal services, really striving for a continued great level of service that provided to residents. We heard a lot about snow plowing in this process, and really shout out to the crews that do that work. A real intentional focus on interaction and impact in the way that communication happens within City Hall and outside externally with residents and business owners, and really, like I said, mentioning and maximizing funding opportunities, meaning looking for competitive grants and putting the city in a position to qualify for funds to really achieve some of those big picture, large visions that are part of the city's future. Arts and culture, really celebrating Sandusky's identity, the rich history that is here, knowing and recognizing that there are several public art programs, and there's other ways that that is being done, always looking for opportunities to continue to tell Sandusky's history while promoting an inclusive and diverse future. Part of our organizing, so we had the categories, what's driving a lot of this work are the guiding principles. So the icons that are here, I think, are recognizable and may be familiar to some. This goes back to the bicentennial plan and the previous strategic plan. We think it's incredibly important to have consistent messaging and consistent language across all planning documents within the city. I mentioned we did that deep dive, and what we found is there's an opportunity to kind of weave everything together. So introducing vibrant, reintroducing vibrant city, livable city, connected, destination, and celebrated city. We do define those, what that means within this context, and those are important, because where they show up is when we develop the framework, all of these components come together. So the guiding principles, the cities, the goals, those are the 12 that kind of fall underneath each one of those six commission-driven categories, and then specific initiatives that came out of this conversation. This document, I think, looks familiar to most, but all the initiatives are listed too tiny to read tonight, but they're organized into those six categories, all the way on the left, and the goals. And then the way that this works is that across the top are the guiding principles, and the idea is, as decisions or as initiatives are considered in the future, this helps drive to a data-driven decision-making process. So if that specific initiative kind of checks the box with each one of those guiding principles, if there's a location conversation and there's a priority that's given, if there's a funding opportunity and there's a priority that's given, then there is a way to kind of rank or way to consider each one of those initiatives. It's not to say that the highest score is something that is guaranteed that the city is going to take action on, but it is a way to understand how it works kind of in the overall day-to-day operations of the city. Each one of those categories has an accompanying chart, as kind of seen on the screen, the categories across the top. We did not fill this out. This is the job of this commission. This is the job of the city moving forward. Shelley and I are really good at our jobs, but we can't run a city government, and we can't make all the decisions. So this is where we pass the torch and the baton off to you in order to kind of use this tool. We are also developing this tool so that it's handed off to you, so initiatives can be updated. It becomes a living document. The idea is that this has lasting value, and frankly speaking, it does no good on my server back in at City Architecture, so I want to make sure that you guys have all the tools you can in order to implement and execute this plan. All of this kind of culminates into our conclusions. Our conclusions, again, are to pay attention to the narrative of downtown versus, translate that into and, have open and honest conversations about how decisions are made, understanding that with the tools and with the strategic plan as it's organized, it really can get to data-driven conversations and ultimately decisions. We all know that city government, as you're making decisions with constituents and residents and business owners, that emotions are always going to be part of that. We're not trying to ignore that. We're trying to supplement that with data to be able to make some of those decisions. Not easier, not easy, but maybe a little bit easier. So with that, I'll conclude just a sincere thanks that we've been given an opportunity to come back to Sandusky, to work with this group. I can say for the residents that are in the room and maybe some folks that are watching at home, this is a really enthused group of folks that want to all make Sandusky better. So I appreciate the time that you've afforded us and the opportunity to help Sandusky.
Questions or comments for Mr. Pestic? Question. Thank you for giving us the Reader's Digest version.
Yes.
If I may, I'm sorry, I should have moved faster. I wanted to see if my colleagues had something else to say first. So I would like to say to the folks at home, and the folks who are here, the heart that may hear it tonight, how terribly important I think this is. We, as a commission and a staff, have come together to articulate what our objectives are, and as a commission, the staff, and the public at large. This is exactly where we were back in 2014 and 2015. This is history in a way rewriting itself, but making it, to use one of the words you used, more stable, more durable, something that is going to continue the progress, but it's going to add more. And if I were at home, and if I were a cynical person, and I was before I joined city government and saw how much city government can do for the people that live here, if I were a cynical person, I'd say, ah, what are these people nattering on about another strategic plan? What difference does it make? I look back at the strategic plan, the bicentennial plan that we adopted, that made all the difference in the world. We had a great staff. We had a great commission. We have a great staff, and we have another great commission. This is what's going to allow us to build on all that and keep it. And if you have any doubts about the importance of a strategic plan, when you have a commission and a staff committed to executing it, look at what's happened to the city of Sandusky over the last 10 years. That should eradicate any doubts that you have. So I'm pleased with the work that you've done. I'm pleased with the outcome, and I think that this is something that bodes very well, extremely well, for the city's future. So thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Mr. Crable.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I very much enjoyed the opportunity to work with you and work with fellow commissioners. It was, you know, at times a little bit of a slog, but I think the opportunity to sit down and think in a very concerted way about, you know, where we wanted to be and how we could get there was a good exercise. So again, I thank you for you and your team's involvement in this. What I would do, and perhaps I'm echoing some of what Commissioner Murray said, but I would hope that we could get this document in front of the public so they can see it. And if that's in the next couple of weeks, I think that that would be good timing. You need to set aside a little bit of time, because there's a lot of reading and a lot of digesting here, but, you know, any feedback would be welcome, so.
Additional comments?
If I could react to Mr. Crable, I believe that the document is going to be posted on the city website tonight or tomorrow.
Good.
Watermarked with draft, but it's out there for review and kind of comment.
Good. A lot of good, a lot of good, a lot of good work in this document, and I appreciate you sticking with it. We got off to somewhat of a bumpy start, not all of us getting together in the same room, but we did, we did come together, and I think that what you represent here are our wishes and our thoughts, as it should be. But you provided, you provided a good, a good bit of steering for us to get to this, to get to these conclusions, and I look forward to review and hopefully coming to an agreement on passage of this in the near future.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
Alex, so between now and the time that we look at the document for the last time and approve it, or not, this is the last call for comments, right? Between now and then, so that all the comments are in place, and we don't come to the final finish line, and then somebody's got a bunch of comments. We would like them between in this window here.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. If there's nothing further, Mr. Pestic, you are excused.
All right.
You're certainly welcome to stay the evening, but I think you have a drive ahead of you.
I do. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Sure. Any residents with comments regarding the night's agenda items, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. I had a question, or actually a couple of comments on item number one, which is nearly a $48,000 cost overrun for East Water Street. Typically, cost overruns are based on items that were unforeseen, but what the public is seeing is $38,000 for manholes brought up to grade, and I'm not an engineer, but I do know a little bit about grade. That should have been part of the original project, is to bring those manhole covers. That should have been, maybe part of the original estimate for work done. Don't know why it wasn't, but it probably should have been. $10,000 for a metal bench as part of the overrun. $21,000 for trash receptacle or receptacles as part of the cost overrun, and a piano key crosswalk, whatever that is, at a cost overrun of $8,400. Now, those are all things that are not unforeseen. Those are all things that were seen. It probably should have either been part of the original estimate or not part of the project period. So maybe an explanation as to, you know, why that is, why we added some things on that weren't part of the original agreement. The other question is, and I don't know if every municipality does this or not, but is there not a way for the commission to see these cost overruns before the cost overrun is actually completed? I mean, you're being asked to approve something that they've already done. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me, and maybe some of the long-term commissioners can tell me that's the way every municipal, municipality does it, you know? So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwab. Additional comments on agenda items? We'll address those items as that legislation comes before us, hopefully. Commissioners, do you have before us several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation? Can I have a motion to accept?
So moved to second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Some of those, one of those, item C, I think is the exact reason why we have a consent agenda today. Instead of putting that on a regular agenda, that would be a lot of interesting pronunciation, wouldn't it, Ms. Byers?
Mr. Chairman.
I wish you luck.
On item A, that includes dump days. I've had a couple of people ask me about, is that for the litter cleanup? If you read here, it says the 2025 litter cleanup events. So that does include our two dump days that we have every year, and that's very costly, so it's not bags and a couple of people, you know, picking up trash.
It's not, it's not you and a couple of other people picking up trash, is it?
I buy all this stuff.
Yeah. I've seen that. Ms. Byers, you present the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of Ohio EPA 2025 litter cleanup events grant submission. Item B, approval of payment to Ohio EPA for Big Island Water Works annual licensing fee. Item C, approval of eight 2025 chemical contracts for Big Island Water Works and for the wastewater treatment plant.
Commissioners, having heard that resolution and ordinances, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of the resolution and the several ordinances indicated in items one through C, I'm sorry, A through C pursuant to section 14 of the city's charter, and with apologies to Kelly Cresser, who had to read all the names of those many chemicals for so many years before we finally adopted a consent agenda.
Second.
Hope she's watching. We've got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Byers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Ms. Byers, you present item number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first and final change order for work performed by Great Lakes Demolition Company LLC of Clyde, Ohio, for the East Water Street resurfacing project in the amount of $47,770.28, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Jalen.
I would move to adopt this ordinance under section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Klein, I wonder if, I know you and I have had considerable discussion regarding this ordinance earlier today, and I wonder if you attempt to answer a few of the questions posed by, posed by the resident regarding manholes and regarding the other couple of items.
Yes. The first thing I think I'd like to address is the timeliness of moving forward with these change orders. It's very difficult during construction to stop and just tell a contractor, hold on, I have to go to commission in two weeks to get approval to do that. As you will see, in the actual change order, there's about $15,000 to $20,000 worth of downtime, what a contractor calls downtime. And what that is, is if there's a conflict on site and there's something that causes the contractor to lose the ability to make money because they have equipment sitting there that isn't making them money, they get paid by the amount of pipe they're putting in the ground. So if there's something that happens that they can't put pipe in the ground for six hours, they'll bill you for all of that material and labor and everything that's sitting there. So it's very important, as we're moving forward with a construction project, to make sure that we are minimizing the downtime that those contractors like to charge. It's easy money for them. They get discouraged when they have downtime, but they also want to get paid on that day. So as we're moving forward with the project, we typically have a contingency or an owner's allowance. On an ODOT-funded project or federally funded project through ODOT, we're not allowed to have those allowances or contingencies. So we have to make the decision in the field to move forward with that individual item, and sometimes it's something that is extremely critical for the project to move forward, moving a catch basin so that it drains properly, which is exactly what happened on this project, where adjustments came into play because there was a water line that was in the field somewhere different than what it originally was in the field. So we had to move a catch basin. What you'll notice on the corner near Meggs is two catch basins are adjacent to each other. One was supposed to be about 50 yards to the west, but we had to move it and redesign it, and that's where the downtime came in. So those are the, those are the things that if we don't make that decision in the field and we tell the contractor to wait, instead of paying for six hours of downtime, we're paying for two, three, four, five weeks of downtime until we can get it redesigned and everything else. So that's why sometimes we have to come after the fact. As you'll remember on Justice Center, things like asbestos abatement, other things like that, we came back before we moved forward with the work. We wanted to make sure that in those situations, we are addressing it beforehand, and we're making sure that we're out in front of commission. The piano key, the crosswalks, that was something that definitely came up during the project. It was evident as we were moving forward with the design that the driveways didn't pop enough for the cyclist, to make sure that the concrete driveways, which receive a different type of paint material than the other portion, the concrete gets epoxy, the other gets thermoplastics, so we had to adjust the material we used so that it would pop more and last longer. So that was, we wanted to make sure that the piano keys were something that the, not only the driver leaving areas like the yacht club, where with the tall shrubs and bushes, it's kind of hard to see, we wanted to draw attention to the fact that there was a, there's a bike path on the other side of this, so be careful. The benches and trash cans, those were things that we got caught in unit price issue going back and looking at it. For example, the trash receptacles, one contractor bid $2,000, the other contractor bid $10,500. So as we're going through the project, and I'm trying to adhere to the plan that was adopted as to where these items should be, I noticed that those were left off the original contract amount. We award to the lowest and best bidder. That lowest and best bidder might have had a great asphalt price or concrete price, something like that. That doesn't mean that their trash receptacle price was a little higher than what, or in this case, a lot higher than what it should have been. So as I'm trying to adhere to the plan that was in place, I wanted to make sure that we did what was accepted by the stakeholders and everybody else when this was adopted in '21, so I added those, that receptacle and that bench to the location. It was actually added on the north side of where Warren connects, where the local path It was actually added on the north side of where Warren connects, where the local path and the Sandusky Bay pathway were added to it. So I think I answered the questions that came up, and I know I probably went a little longer than needed, but I felt it was important to make sure that these were explained and why these things happened. And I guess the last item with the adjustments to manholes, one of the things that did come up, we saw that there was quite a bit of standing water at the northwest corner of Megs and East Water Street. And it was actually coming back up the, up the curb ramp, and it was going to cause a problem for anybody that might have been in a wheelchair or, you know, if you're on a bike and you hit one of those, that's not a good situation. So we had to adjust the curb. The problem was outside of the original survey line where the water to the north of Megs was actually not draining the way that we had thought it was draining. We thought we were going to be able to shed the water in one direction. That didn't happen. So we had to go back out and adjust and lower everything to make sure that the drainage was, was proper in that location. So that's why the change order came in where it did.
Comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'll answer the question of why it is, I think, that these kinds of change orders are appropriate. You know, the real world has rough, uneven edges and things that we don't expect. And we, if we demand, if we demand perfection of a contractor, you have to know every single elevation, how everything is going to turn out, and we're not going to have a change order to adjust different units, different amounts of units, different amounts of asphalt that turned out to be required, different amounts of concrete, whatever it is. If we're going to say to that contractor, you have to have this absolutely perfect, and if you guess wrong about the number of units, we're going to get significantly higher bids. We're not going to get competitive bids. Instead, if we say, look, you gave us your best and lowest bid, and then you have unit pricing for these things that are variables, we're going to get better bids. Over the long haul, that's what we do. And I think that we, as a commission, we as a city, we want to be able to encourage staff to say, hold on a second, wait a minute, that isn't quite working the way we thought. We want the contractor to say, that isn't, to use your example, that isn't draining quite the way we thought. We want the, we want our representatives in the field to be empowered to make those kind of changes so that we get a better product and we get a better return on our investment. So that's why I support these kind of changes, because I know we have quality, educated people on the ground, knowledgeable, I should say, about their field, and they can decide what's in the best interest of the city, and I, I trust the people making these decisions, you in particular.
Mr. Klein, I appreciate your explanation, especially on the, the concept, which is a valid one of, of how these changes are made in the field. In my previous life, I did a lot of work in cities and municipalities, and I've never seen it done in the other way. To do it another way, to run back to a council or a mayor or a set of commissioners, would slow a process, slow a project down so dramatically that it would take years to accomplish something like this. It's just, it is the way that it's done, and it's the way it should be done. Also appreciated your comment regarding what I'll call cherry-picking pieces and parts of a project. We don't get that luxury. We benefit by the contractor having the lowest and best bid. But when, when you have a change order, you can't go back in and say, oh, by the way, I want the other guy's low number on that trash can, or I want the other guy's low number on that manhole. We have to take the good with the bad because we are getting the lowest and best bid. So I think your department spends a lot of our dollars, no question about that. But I think if we went back and tallied things up, we have a heck of a lot more change orders where we get money back or get our contingency back, back than the dollars that we spend out. So thank you for what you're doing. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
If I may.
Mr. Crable.
I concur with the comments of Mr. Murray and Mr. Brady. In large measure, there's a couple of things, though, that were raised, like benches and trash cans. That doesn't seem to me to be something that is an urgent thing that has to be decided in the field. That's something that could come back to the commission. But what I don't understand about that particular item is, did we leave it out of the contract with the, with the lowest and best bidder? Or was it in the contract? I'm not clear on that.
Yeah. So the, there was one bench and one trash can included in the contract, but in the original plan, there were supposed to be two on the project. So I added the second bench and the second trash can. So we already had the unit price, and that was already in there. So we had to pay that unit price for that extra trash can. And I will say, I followed up with the supplier of that trash can because there is a completely separate branding and wayfinding package for the Sandusky Bay pathway that was gone through from 2019 to '21. And the receptacles, the trash cans, they're all different than what the typical one that the city purchases is. That was something that was accepted and that we've moved forward with, and I've tried to adhere to as we move forward on the pathway. But I did follow up with the vendor of that, the supplier of that, and they, I told them on future projects, we're probably going to be looking for an or equal, which is always in the documents. It was too late on this project to do it, but I'm also going to see if it might be something that, if it is something that would come down to it, maybe we can just purchase it at our cost and then install it at our dollar rather than, it shouldn't be that hard for our crews to be able to install these things, but it's a lesson learned on this one for sure, to see if we might be able to do it differently next time.
Yeah. And please don't misinterpret my comments. I very much support, you know, the general idea that stuff happens on a job and, and decisions have to be made in order to keep, you know, the process moving. So I certainly understand that. But I think that there are maybe some things that can come back to us, and as, and as you suggested, you know, our own staff take care of, so.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I would just note that we were playing under somewhat of a different set of rules, right, with ODOT? And sometimes you have to adhere to what they want. Not, not that what they want is bad, they're just, they have a different set of rules and they, they go to the, the extra mile. And the other thing I would point out is, I don't have a problem with it because there were MPO dollars in this particular project, right? So it was supplemented with some dollars outside of ours, so I appreciate that.
Ms. Byers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Byers, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a five-year lease agreement with Cromer Family Farms LLC of Sandusky, Ohio for parcel number 33-00230 located at 3807 West Bogart Road for agricultural and related purposes and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coontz.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item two in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Who can explain why we're leasing a farm? Mr. Klein.
Yes, there's property out in front of the shooting range that is unused property, and we've been actually leasing it out for many years. It's been since before I got here, 11 years ago. So this is just something that we do on an annual basis and figure that it's worth collecting a little bit of cash if we're not utilizing the property.
So it's an income generator. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I'm sorry, but we only own the, we only own the land in connection with the shooting range. Otherwise, we don't have any reason to hold this land. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Byers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Byers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an addendum to the client services agreement with Medicaut Management Incorporated of Cincinnati, Ohio for emergency medical billing services for the Sandusky Fire Department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of review in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Chief, very nice work. It's a bit of alchemy, I suppose, to a certain extent. You seem to be, we seem to be able to recover far more of our EMS dollars for those runs without, really, we're not, we're not negatively impacting the ability of the state to reimburse for those expenses. We have rearranged how we're doing business, and that therefore causes the federal government to pick up a larger portion of the expenses. Am I summarizing that correctly?
Yeah, that's basically correct. You know, Ohio Department of Medicaid only authorizes about, authorized to pay about a quarter of what we charge for our EMS calls. Sandusky Fire transported 988 Medicaid, or patients that were on Medicaid during the year leading up to this legislation. So we're only getting paid on a quarter of that. This is going to allow us, even with the 10% contingency that our billing company and the consulting group get for forming this process, we're probably going to be able to collect 54% of that leftover amount. So we stand to, based on the numbers that they projected for us, we stand to increase the EMS income about $350,000 starting in 2026, when the program takes off.
That's great. It's always good to be able to give the check to a person who isn't, isn't at the table, so that's what this is.
I'm still trying to figure out what alchemy is.
That's a process of turning lead into gold.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Doesn't, it doesn't work, usually.
Ms. Byers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Byers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring a 2003 Chevrolet Suburban as unnecessary and unfit for the city use pursuant to section 25 of the city charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2023 Ford Super Duty F-250 truck from Tri-State Ford of Liverpool, Ohio through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program as authorized by ORC Section 125-04C for the fire department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coontz.
Move for adoption of this ordinance under item four and in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Byers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Byers, you present item number five, please.
Ordinance one, it is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the sub-grant agreement with Community Building Partners LLC relating to the use of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA stimulus funds for the renovation of rural property located at 920 West Osborne Street, the former Osborne Elementary School, in the amount of $200,000 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman. I would move to approve ordinance number one under item five in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, I wonder if you'd give us some explanation? If you would, perhaps you could cover both ordinance number one and ordinance number two of item number five. That way, we won't have to come back to you.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So in November of 2023, this commission approved a $750,000 grant using ARPA funds for the redevelopment of Osborne School. As you know, our ARPA funds must be encumbered by the end of '24 and spent by the end of '26. The developer of Osborne School is undergoing due diligence at this time, including putting together his, the capital stack for the redevelopment of this very important building and project. That includes competitively bidding or applying for, for dollars, in this case, tax credits. They will be applying in early 2024, and if not funded, they'd have to reapply, which could extend the project's timeline beyond the 2026 deadline to expend ARPA dollars. We are hopeful that does not happen, but in the case of doing so, we decided to shift funding. The completion date in of 2026, again, looming, shifting ARPA funds from, or to available economic development funds was the recommendation of staff. At present, there's $879,000 in economic development funds. With this grant and the shift of funds, it leaves a remaining $329,000 available for economic development investments in the city.
So I gather from that explanation that we are protecting the ARPA funds from being lost for nonuse.
Absolutely.
Which is exactly what we all want to do, I think.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Comments or questions? Mr. Torres.
If I could just add, I want to thank Michelle, Erin, and Colleen. We had quite a bit of conversation about this throughout the year. And the ARPA funds that we were going to use initially were transferred to the MacArthur Park project, so those dollars are being used for an important project on the south side. And we thought it, it behoove us to use our dollars to complete this project. So we had, I appreciate all of their input in making some sound recommendations to make sure that those dollars were used elsewhere in a great project, and then also recognizing this project as very important for our community.
And we're certain that those dollars will be expended prior to 2026 on MacArthur Park. We've got projects ready to go in place right now there.
Correct.
Perfect. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Coontz.
Quickly, when I spoke to Mr. Hastings about my role with the Sandusky City Schools, I know that we have the buildings in our possession right now, but he had suggested then that, you know, pretty much anything that was involving the schools, that it's probably safe to just abstain, and it wouldn't cause any problems here in terms of what we need to do.
Sure.
So I just wanted to make that known for the record.
Thank you. Ms. Byers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Abstain.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance. Ordinance number one.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coontz.
Abstain.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ordinance number one of item five is passed. Ms. Byers, you present ordinance number two of item number five.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Community Building Partners LLC relating to the use of economic development funds for the renovation of real property located at 920 West Osborne Street, former Osborne Elementary School, in the amount of $550,000 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Myers, you pull the commission on that ordinance.
Mr. Waddington, Mr. Brady, Mr. Murray, Mr. Pajali, Mr. Coons, Mr. Crable.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington, Mr. Brady, Mr. Murray, Mr. Pajali, Mr. Coons, Mr. Crable.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. I have a number of donations here. First four for the Parks and Recs Department. I'd like to thank Atai Yancey for his donation of 10 pizzas for the children at, out of school at Mills. Dunkin' Donuts on Perkins Ave for their donation of six dozen donuts for the children out of school at Mills. Mary Jane Hyler, H-A-H-L-E-R, for her donation of $2,200 to provide gifts for winter break and spring break campers during the holidays. And Paddle Bar for the donation of 10 kayak paddles for use in future water programs and training. If I get a motion to accept all those donations.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to all those people for those donations.
A $1,000 donation to the K-9 Fund from Smith's Top Notch through the Remember Cruisin' Car Club. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
And a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to Top Notch.
Sandusky Park and Rec would like to ask for approval from the City Commission to register and apply for Walmart's Spark the Good Grant Funds on a quarterly basis. The local grants are designed to address the unique needs of the communities that Walmart operates. Grant funding amounts range from a minimum of $250 to $5,000, and nonprofit school organizations and government entities are eligible to apply. No matching funding from the city is required for applying. Forget a motion to approve that grant.
So moved.
And a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
And I would also like to request a motion to proceed with the purchase of four Chevy Silverado work trucks. The total cost will be $191,785.94. The vehicles will be used for fleet, building, maintenance, forestry, and, what was that other one, Michelle?
That's four. Forestry, street, municipal buildings, and the fleet.
So, these are, these are four vehicles that were approved back in 2023. We weren't able to get those orders again. We just were notified last week. If we want them, we need to order them right away. We'll bring legislation to the commission at the next meeting for formal, but we'd like to request a motion to approve that so we can get those ordered immediately.
So moved.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Just so the public can be assured, these are still at the state cooperative prices, so we know we're getting a good price.
That's correct.
And this is the last time we're going to buy these.
This completes our list of vehicles that we didn't get in 2023.
And I think this includes the last of the 1970s vehicles.
We're going to get rid of that van that Waddington took to Bridges Out of Poverty now. Mr. Myers, would you individually pull a commission on that expenditure?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington, Mr. Brady, Mr. Murray, Mr. Pajali, Mr. Coons, Mr. Crable.
Yes.
That motion is passed.
Okay. Erie County is taking center stage in a statewide effort to revitalize civic life. Join Leadership Ohio and the Erie County Community Foundation on Thursday, November 21st at 6:00 PM at BGSU Firelands McBride Auditorium for an inspiring evening of community connection. Watch, join or die, and discuss with local leaders how we can strengthen our democracy through civil engagement. To register for the event, visit leadershipohio.org/join-in. On Saturday, November 23rd, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, Sandusky Fire Department will be offering a community CPR class at Station One. This class is the last of four quarterly CPR classes in 2024. Any community member who would like to take part in these classes can register with the Fire Prevention Bureau at 419-627-5823. General reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings, if your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied during the winter months, we highly strongly encourage and recommend that you contact the city to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which could lead to costly repairs for the property owner. The customer accounting office can be reached at 419-627-5893 to schedule an appointment for water disconnection. Public Works, once again, Public Works staff along with consultants from the EPA will be canvassing throughout the city in order to complete the water service line inventory for all private service lines as mandated by the U.S. EPA. City staff will be wearing shirts with the city seal and have city-issued photo IDs. Any resident wishing to circumvent this process is encouraged to submit their survey through our website at www.cityofsandusky.com-waterlines. Additionally, notifications will be sent this week informing property owners of the status of the water line material. All questions can be directed to the Department of Public Works at 419-627-5884. Sorry, we got a busy couple weeks here. The leaf collection program started today. Refer to www.cityofsandusky.com/leafcollection for dates for your area. All concrete has been poured at Wheels Park, and the fence was removed. While we would love to watch the public enjoy their new park, we do request that users respect ongoing work as the contractor continues to finish vertical faces of concrete, install shade structures, and grade the landscaping. Staff is also hoping to resurface the parking lot this year, so there may be occasions when vehicular access will be directed through Battery Park. Please pay close attention to signage and construction vehicles on Columbus Ave, as we have still witnessed many vehicles traveling north, but that direction is closed for many more months until construction is completed. Please only drive south between Water Street and Washington Ave, or use Wayne or Jackson, which were recently resurfaced. Shores and Islands, Ohio completed and dedicated a mural at 125 East Water Street featuring iconic imagery from Ohio and Sandusky Bay. The mural was created in collaboration with Sandusky Public Arts and Culture Commission, who participated in the creative process and provided funding support from the Public in Art and Acquisition Fund as defined in their 2024 Public Art Work Program. And that concludes my report. Happy to take any questions.
Comments or questions for the city manager? Mr. Thorazek, I had an opportunity to tour the skate, the skate park after, after you sent me an email regarding the conclusion of pouring the concrete, and I had an opportunity, it was late in the day, but I had an opportunity to engage the project manager at the time, and I, and he explained that they had a beginner area, an intermediate area, and somewhat of an expert area in this park. And I asked him what area he thought I belonged in, and he suggested I stay in my truck. And I, I appreciate that because our health is always very important, but I was, I was really impressed with the quality of work that they've done, the smoothness of, of the concrete, and, and just everything about it looked so professional. I honestly, I was just stunned at how, you know, how it has come together and how good that it does look. And along one side, what I thought was a handrail, it was explained to me, that's not a handrail. That's a rail that they actually get up on a skateboard on. I do belong in my truck. Yeah, but that, that will be quite a nice amenity to our city and, and probably a decade or so overdue, I know. Additional comments or questions for the city manager? They're letting you off the hook easy. Items of old business, any items of old business, commissioners? Items of new business. I have, I have a zone map, or I have a, I need to request a motion for a, public hearing for a zone map amendment at 1215 Campbell Street for December the 9th. I believe that is the old Campbell School.
So moved.
And a motion and a second discussion. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. And hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Additional items of new business, commissioners?
Chairman.
Commissioner.
Not really on the new business, but we're going to be at, I've talked, I think, most of the commissioners down at Karen Chair again this year. We already got a $2,000 check, and I'm hoping that all the commissioners could stop maybe like 20 minutes, a half hour, do the tour, bring your checkbook. It's a good cause. We're doing it on December 7th, and it's 10:00 noon, so we'll be following up with that, and just want to get it out early. Since, I know it's like a month away, but it's still a good thing to do.
Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coons.
Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to say, first of all, I wanted to thank John for his communication. When we communicate and I express a concern, he gets right on the phone and talks to some folks, as was the case when I told him about the Pace Park area, formerly Sunnyside. And I had been talking about that area in the back where those woods and trees are. And actually, Mr. Waddington and his crew and myself went out there. I think Commissioner Pajali might have been out there, too. You know, dragged some trees out, but it was still in bad shape. But when I went back the last time, I could see a clear path back there, so it looked much better. And remember, I was talking previously about, well, if it's going to look like that, maybe there should be a fence up, but I see that there's no need for a fence now that I've, I've taken a look at it. So, I just wanted to commend John for that and the city staff who did it. I think we just need to make sure we cut back those trees from time to time, so it's clear. Similar situation at Farwell Park. Two things happened at both of those parks that was great, and it connects to a point that I wanted to make about our website. I don't know how much we actually post on our website. Some of these things might seem minor, but they're really major, right? These kinds of things where we repave these courts. Those courts out there at Farwell look really nice. The courts out at Sunnyside, which is Pace Park now, that has a big O representing Ohio State, that looks nice, right? But when we can make sure that the other areas behind it, because I think we had this conversation, that the wooded areas behind those two places, as far as parks, are the only parks that I know of that actually have that. So, the one is ready, but the one at Farwell, I know our partner is Cedar Point. That area behind Farwell Park, it's nice to have all those beautiful courts, but then you go back there and you look at what's behind there, and you see that somebody's living back there, right? You see tarps. There's a couple of them. And so, and I believe we talked about that. He said you would, you would make some contacts. So, I appreciate those kinds of things, but I think it would be nice to actually have something on our website where we listed, and maybe we do this, I might be jumping ahead, where we listed those things that some people might see as minor, but they're really major. Like, this is the work that was done. These courts were done, right? These areas were cleaned. Now, I know there's a lot of that stuff that goes on, but those places that are really, really visible, I think that that would be good to at least list it on our website and let folks know about it. Finally, as it relates to, I think you all got the email from Marcus Harris, because Commissioner Murray asked this question about knowing a little bit more about the Civic Index, and he mentioned the Civic Index and how there is a, an event on November 21st from 6:00 to 8:30 at Bowling Green State University's Firelands Campus at the McBride Auditorium. So, I'd encourage you to actually attend that event so we can get a good look at what this Civic Index might be all about and ways that citizens can engage here with us by using that Civic Index. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Coons. Additional, additional comments, items of new business?
I have just a comment, if I may, that with regard to Richard's comments, I think having that information, albeit perhaps minor improvements on parks, but having that kind of information available on our website also underscores the commitment that, that the city has toward the neighborhoods. And these parks are part of those neighborhoods. They're, they're integral parts of some of these neighborhoods. So, I think to the extent that we can get that information up on the website, to the extent that we can, we can do anything on social media, so much the better, because it is important that people understand the commitment that we have to the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Commissioner Crable. Additional items of new business. If not, we'll go to public comments on any item that pertains to city business. Please step to the podium, share with us your name and address. Tell us your comments. Ask you to limit your comments to five minutes.
I'll try it for three. Hi, my name is Jessica Crowell, and right now I'm grateful for the commission board and the leaders to take in consideration for the Sandusky Transit Center to put, to put a departure or pickup.
Shelter.
Yeah, shelter by Father's Heart Church. Would also recommend to the Rec Center. Right now, the Green Line, I have talked to Mr. Stacy and more than a couple, over a year, on this ordinance, and he said that it was in the making. Well, I also found out that the Green Line no, no longer runs, and doesn't run on Sundays. And the last Sunday of the month, what I'm asking for, I have a petition for the bus stop, 500 signatures from the community, because every Friday of the month, we give fresh produce out, and the last Sunday of the month, we give food away. There's been people numerous times walking away with shopping carts and different things. For them to have, I've went into deeper things that, you know, we would get a grant for the bus stop, for the people to come and participate, because I, I was too short, but I also have pictures of them people with the shopping carts in the rains, and the Fire Department has also had to give these people rides, where if we had the bus stop, it would be convenient for them to come in to get their food and get their, get their ordinance. We also have teen, teen things on Thursday, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Teen things on Thursdays that this would be in support of taking back the South Side and the people in different, different areas and different things. I'd like to hand the court the petitions. I don't know how to do this.
I think I just get communicated.
All right, hear my. There's only like four of them. But that means that our community is okay with us. I mean, I took the time and the thing, but to see these people walk away with, you know, they only can take half of the food, or they're walking in the rain, or they're walking in the snow just to get some food. I mean, I don't understand their conditions or what they are, but if we could even help them, you know, it's part of an outreach thing that I think the city should address. I've addressed it with the administrator, and he told me I had to go one step further. So, I think this is my one step further. I'm not sure. But I'd like to take that into consideration, because with the petitions, the city of Sandusky people are, and most of them doesn't, don't even live around that area. I mean, I went all over, and if I need more, I will. It's just a consideration. I mean, I didn't have the pictures and the videos, but I have them, and I can present them to you if you'd like to see these people with their shopping carts and the little kids that walk up with their grandma or grandpa. I'm not sure their conditions. I have to help feed 400 people, 400 cars, 400 families, and the city of Sandusky get fed by our church and the things that are going on there. So, to help them people. And hey, they might even get to go to church sometime.
Thank you for representing that organization. I know it to be a great organization, and you do a world of good. I wonder, we will certainly take your petition into consideration, but I wonder if you would share with our clerk your name and address, so we have a way to communicate back to you.
Okay, my name is Jessica Crowell, C-R-O-L-L. My website?
Just the address.
Address, 2027 Campbell Street, Unit C2, Sandusky, Ohio.
Thanks for what you're doing. It makes a big difference.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Pajali.
Are you, are you a member of the church?
Oh, yes, I am. I've been of 27 years.
Yeah, they, they do a nice job, and I see there's always a lot of people attending. I'm just wondering if we could make some sort of arrangement where if we need right of way, if the church would be willing to donate some right of way, so we can, we can put that shelter there?
Okay.
That might be something.
We have, we have to have the bus stop first.
Yeah. Okay, you need the stop.
The bus stop, and then the shelter that would come.
Well, that'll be something to think about if, if we get to that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments on any item pertaining to city business and a shelter? Not all entertain a motion to adjourn.